Did you have my home? Yes, ma'am. You did. Did he give you?
Y'all ready? I'd like to call to order the Iredell County Board of Commissioners' six o'clock regular meeting for Tuesday, May the 6th, 2025. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Haupt to get the invocation for the Board of Commissioners, and so we seek guidance and wisdom in the work we're about to do for the citizens of Iredell County.
You're having fun. We've come to you today asking you for guidance and wisdom, Lord, in all decisions, and help us to take careful consideration of all the factors that deal with the decisions we're about to make on behalf of our citizens. Thank you for all your blessings, and continue to bless our county and our state and our country, Lord. We definitely need it. Thank you, and please be with everyone that needs help, that are dealing with family issues, with health and sickness and disease, Lord, and help them to be healed completely, Lord, if that's your will, and help it to be pain-free, Lord. And we come to you tonight with all the glory and praises, and thank you for all of our many blessings, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, I'd like to ask Vice Chair Neder to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Chair Conley, we do have one addition, and that's under Administrative Matters. That'll be item 8.11, and that is a resolution regarding House Bill 765.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as adjusted.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If any opposed. Agenda is approved. Going down our agenda, we do not have any present, any special presentation or awards, and we do not have an appointment before the board. But we do have a public hearing this evening, and I would like to turn it over to the county manager to kick that off.
Thank you. Mr. Todd is here to walk the board through a public hearing request, or a public hearing regarding a request to rezon approximately 12.19 acres along Highway 150 River Highway. Mr. Todd?
Good evening to the board.
Good evening.
The request we have before us tonight is to rezon a property that's currently RA and can, and general business conditional use district outlined on the screen in blue to general business conditional district. There's, in the application, you have a list of uses that the applicant is requesting in that GB district, and staff does support this request based on the results. The request would result in expansion of the 2545 Horizon Plan corridor commercial designation, in which the property is already, a portion of the property is already identified as. Also, the close proximity to existing commercial and GB uses, and the conditions would help safeguard the surrounding property owners. Planning Board also voted unanimously for this request. This is the land use plan showing portion of the property is corridor commercial, the other portion is low-density residential. So with this request, it would amend the plan. The current property is vacant. You do see some residential to the west, north, and south, while there's more commercial to the east. A few pictures of the property. This is looking back toward Mooresville, with the property on our right, toward the intersection of Quiet Cove. And again, this is looking west with the property on our left. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Yeah, I would like to run over a few questions. During our four o'clock hour, we discuss matters that are on our agenda, and I'd like to further have that conversation again during the six o'clock hour prior to the public hearing. And some of the questions I was going over with you during the four o'clock were basically around the permitted uses. And as I went through the packet, what we have in print prior to the meeting, and then we have the chance to ask these questions, I know there's a list of permitted uses for general business. However, in this case, they have cited multiple that would be of interest, or, I guess you say, of interest for that, for that site, because once that rezoning takes place, no matter who owns that piece of property, and I'm saying this correctly, that whether that piece of property is owned by the current person, or if they sell it, those zoning still go with that piece of property, correct?
That's correct, and it's the limit.
So what we're deciding on is the zoning for a piece of property for the lifetime of that property, or until another rezoning were to take place?
Correct.
Okay. With that being said, though, I was looking through the permitted uses. Number one, when I was looking through the notes, it has a list of a variety. There's several that stood out to me, and the reason I'm saying this, there are a lot of times the operating hours, and that would be such as like convenience, gas stations, and the bar, which typically operate on, well, of course, convenience sites can be 24 hours potentially, or whatever hours they would so choose. Bars, a lot of times, would be later in the day and evening. I know there's going to be a 150 widening. I don't know exactly what implications that would have on that piece of property, but my questions are just concern for the direction of this piece of property, being that it's located, and I'm fairly familiar with the area down 150, being that I believe there's boats, there's the storage, various things like that on that area. But I'm not sure what the customer base would be on this, as, I'm not sure the draw, basing my questions off of the information that's in front of us, is there, are they married to the requests that they have in here, or with the owner applicant? And we can bring them up, or you can ask them, or whichever one, to those actual two requests, since they've included them in the list of uses, the bar and the gas station. It's surrounded by the, a lot of, lot of homes, various things there. I'm just wanting a little more information on the exact uses.
Sure. And at Planning Board, there was some concern expressed with the bar as far as a use that was not discussed further with Planning Board, so the list was left with the current, as far as the application and those uses. But the applicant and owner are here, so I would probably let them stand up to address those questions.
Okay, that was my concern. I'll hand it back over to, to the chair if he wants to ask if there's any further questions.
Any further questions before the applicant speaks? And the applicant's here, if they want to come up and speak, that would be good.
Yes, my name is William Allison. I'm with Piedmont Land Approval Needs, and I'm here on behalf of the owners, the Beeler's. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mr. Chairman and Board, under the circumstances, the, I would like to touch on a couple of different points here. Number one is the general consistency with the 2045 Horizon Plan. Number two is a portion of the property is already zoned, general business. Probably the bigger factor in this is the topography of the property. By nature of the slope associated with the western half of the property, it pushes the development to the east, up against the motorcycle shop and the treatment plant. So by nature of the watershed ordinance, you, you are limited on how much you can build upon, and then the general topography of the land is going to reduce away from the adjoining residences. So that, from that perspective, we're trying to give some distance in there, but it, it's, it does it for us, the property. I'd be glad to try and answer any questions you might have at this time.
If you would be so kind as to address the, my concerns that I had brought up on this, it's just in the request that you had. Now, you worked with, you said you're the applicant, or the, the?
I'm representing.
Represent, thank you.
Yes.
So y'all worked together then to come up with a list of uses?
Yeah, we did, and there was a, an additional party or entity who's interested in the property that had some input in on it as well. With regards to the, the list of uses, I mean, just make one other point here. In the general business district, there are over 180 uses, and 36 puts you right at about 20% of the uses. That's probably a little more than what you're accustomed to seeing with, with this type of request, but the, the owners really didn't want to pigeonhole themselves into two or three different uses, and felt like it was a need for more than the normal. Let, let me speak to the, the bar and convenience. I, I think, under the circumstances, and I don't want to speak directly for the owner, I'll, I'll yield to him, but the convenience store is a, is a more important use for the potential for this property. What, what they're looking at there is having more of a storage, boat storage facility in the rear of the property and toward the front, have perhaps one or two out parcels to accommodate one, some of these businesses. If the, if the bar, if there's folks here tonight that are concerned about the bar, then, then certainly we can, we can address that or discuss that. But I think the convenience store is, is, is more important for our client than the two, of the two.
Well, I appreciate that, too, because sometimes when you hear the word convenience store, it conjures up a lot of different type of scenarios, too.
Yes. Yep, thank you.
That's up. I'm good. No further questions for me.
Anybody else have any questions before we open up the whole hearing? I would open up the public hearing in regards to consider a request from applicants Kim and Lynn Beeler of Woodland and Waterview LLC to rezon approximately 12.19 acres along River Highway, which is also known as 150. And at this time, I would like to call up Luke Lambert. Mr. Lambert, if you will, just state your name and your address.
Yeah, I'm Luke Lambert. I'm the property owner of 143 Green Bay. So on the map up here, I am this corner lot, it's on the, the western side of the property to the south border, so it's the long strip with the back portion of the property line bordering there. And I'm, first off, I want to say thank you guys for the, the floor here and the opportunity to speak, but the other property owners that are in the surrounding areas, along with multiple other folks within Green Bay Forest, you know, I've had conversations with them. And frankly, you know, we all have a lot of concern. We have had some conversation with Mr. Allison on the behalf of, of the other party in this process, and there's, there's been a lot of discussion throughout the process of the fact that the intentions are to develop the eastern side of the property. And, you know, I think all that makes a lot of sense when you look at the neighborhoods that are around the other end of the property. These, this neighborhood, you know, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the area. It's a pretty serene location. All these lots are a little bit larger than, than just your average lot. The property owners of all these lots purchased these lots with the idea of having a serene privacy. And so, as you pass that, that curve there, you know, it goes into pretty serene neighborhood areas. So we have pretty strong concern that if this is, this rezoning is done, and just completely turned over to all the uses that are listed, that, you know, we don't really know what could potentially happen. I think that the ask that myself and the other property owners have here is that if we do approve this, under the premise of what we're saying we're asking for, we should apply some conditional constraints that assure the property owners and assure the county that we are approving it for the use that is being discussed and, and what we're saying we're going to do. You know, the moment we completely rezon the entire piece of property, there's no instrument or anything in place to prevent the property from being sold and building a sheets right there, you know? So for us, as the property owners, you know, representing Green Bay Forest and those 30-some homes there on, on that side, and then particularly the ones that are to my west and north there, we're, we're very concerned that without a site plan in place, or something that clearly defines exactly why we're rezoning this, there's nothing protecting the owners of the surrounding properties. And, and Ms. Neder, I appreciate your concerns. Those are, you know, certainly concerns that we have. Yes, i- if you go up the road about a half mile, it does start turning into more of an industrial area, but the area that we are in is a, is clearly a serene residential area with, with nice homes that have been, you know, the property owners have invested, you know, a lot of money to, to have a protected, serene residential environment.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Allison, do you want to speak again? I know you're signed up. Do you?
I don't have anything further to share. Thank you.
Okay. Lynn Beeler, would you like to speak?
Not unless you've got a question for me. If you have one, then I'll step up.
Come on up. There may be, there may be a question or two.
Yeah, that way we can go ahead and just have further discussion.
If you will, just state your name and your address, please.
Lynn K. Beeler, 160 Ben's Road, Mooresville, North Carolina, 2817. With Water, Woodland and Waterview LLC.
Got you. Anybody got any questions for Mr. Beeler?
Bill, are you, listening to some of the concerns, I think you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, put some additional conditions or things you were willing to do in there. Are you guys willing to consider maybe changing this to a conditional rezoning and put, so there's some conditions that could be put in there that does not potentially prohibit you from doing what you want to do, but it also gives peace of mind to the existing neighbors of what their concerns are? I know you've talked to some of them. Are there some situations where you guys, as the applicants, could consider that?
What I know about Iredell County, the other counties, which we've done work and had the rezoning in, you guys do an excellent job of monitoring it, the way you set it up, and it's tracked, and it's, you know, it's got certain parameters so that we don't, I bought this property 15 years ago between the OA recession and fighting with DOT for seven years in court. You know what I'm saying? It was part of my retirement. But we've, at least in concept, what we have right now is, everybody's so busy, and they're so, you know, they're limited time with their families and everything else, and we're trying to develop a boat service that has a concierge service that would allow them to call up and get ice put in the boat, get the boat put in the water, and that way the family doesn't spend an extra two hours hauling it around doing it, which we're right there. So that's the initial concern, and Kim and I have an interest in retaining ownership in it, simply because it becomes a residual for our retirement and stuff like that. Unfortunately, my experience with conditional uses is if it gets really complicated really fast, unless somebody's got a design-specific intent of what you conditionally use for, then it would be a question we'd have to defer to the other people that are involved in the business with us.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No one else has signed up. Would anybody else like to speak on this matter? Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public.
What you got?
I'm sorry.
You had one minute, there was one moment, one minute remaining on the clock.
Want your other minute?
Yeah.
Come on.
Yeah.
First off, thank you. Luke Lambert, 143 Green Bay. First off, thank you for expressing the, the plans, and so, again, I, I think that the plan that Mr. Beeler has is, is probably a, a potentially good plan for the property. You know, again, as the property owners, we would just like that to be conditional to the approval of the rezoning, because, you know, we can say what we're going to do here, but if we rezon it for other things, it honestly doesn't really mean a whole lot. And I think everybody here is familiar with that, and, and understands that if we rezon it for something that we didn't say that that's what we're going to do, that what we actually rezoned it for is what we have allowed to potentially happen. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir. If you will, just approach and state your name and your address, please.
My name's Mattson. My address is 61 Firetuck Road. I have no stake in this, but I do have experience as a transportation engineer. I know also that the county is not allowed to make zoning decisions based on the actual use, from what I've understood in other counties. Pretty much the only thing that you can do to give the homeowners peace of mind is to negotiate maybe a sound wall, some kind of sound protection. But in terms of if they want to put in a bar, they want to put in a convenience store, we really can't say what they're going to do in the future, so, but you may be able to say as a condition to put in a, authorize a sound study by an engineer and put a sound wall in if the expected decibel level exceeds a certain amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none and seeing none, I'll close the public comment, public hearing, I'm sorry. Matthew Todd, you're back front and center.
Sure, just to cut, touch on a couple of points. This, this is a conditional request, so they are limited to that you, that list of uses that are in the application. I think it's about 36, as Mr. Allison said. The GB, straight GB district includes many more uses, so they have narrowed those uses down to this list. So if they were, if they don't develop it and they were to sell it, the next owner has to do one of these uses, unless they come back through the process and expand that list of uses to include additional uses. What the gentleman before me might have been referring to, as far as what you can't do, is, as you often with our straight rezonings, we have people come up here, say what they're going to do, and often remind the board that you're voting on it based off all those uses. Same as this one, we've heard a plan, but the vote needs to be based off all the uses that have been listed. And as far, and just, again, as far as additional conditions, the applicant does have to agree to those, and we have to get those signatures if any additional conditions are added beyond what they've already applied for and got to this point with the application. And, and that's state law, that we have to follow that process.
So has anybody that's been in opposition of this so far, have they seen the 36, and do they have any specific heartaches that were listed in the conditional 36?
The only, the only one that we heard of was specifically the bar, and that was that planning board that was referenced. I know we have heard of concern about development on that western end just in general, but not specific for uses, just that side.
It sounds like it may be prohibitive based on the property itself.
It could be. I mean, this property, because of watershed, it is limited to 36% impervious unless they come and do the high-density option, which they may, and then the high-density option does come back before this board. It would allow them to go up to 50% with stormwater controls, which, you know, can, can be a good thing if, if stormwater is of concern. Even though they're getting to develop a higher percentage, then there's specific controls put in place to address those stormwater issues.
I guess when I spoke previously, I, I realized it was a conditional offer. I guess what I should have said was, to Mr. Allison, was, are they familiar with any of the 36 that people are uncomfortable with, and are they willing to take those out as a condition for, if we were to approve it that way? I guess that's my question. Are they familiar with any of the 36 that's opposed, and are they willing to potentially take those off of that list and still be able to do what they plan to do and continue with, I'm assuming, whatever else would be left on that list? That was my question, I guess. I didn't state it right.
Right. And from what I heard, maybe, and you'd have to ask them specifically, bar might be on the table for them to exclude. It sounded like the other concern was convenience store, and it sounded like that's something that they would prefer to keep, but that could be a discussion to continue with the applicant.
So in our zoning convenience store slash gas station is how it's listed in our?
Yes.
What would it take to remove the gas station part? I guess that would have to go backwards in time, so never mind. I would say that's, anytime you change anything, it's a, the process.
Could, I mean, if, again, if the applicant's willing, you could specifically exclude gas stations.
Saying a heartache for me, potentially detrimental to the neighborhood, could be more of a bar than a convenience store and a gas station.
Right, yeah.
I'm saying, I mean, on 150, you're going to have convenience stores and gas stations on that corridor as probably, no matter what, at some point, because, you know, that's a major corridor that we would like to see business and commercial development on that corridor. I guess I could see where potentially the bar would be more of a potential detriment to a area if it were that, but.
It would impact the neighbors in a negative way, possibly.
I, I'm just saying, you know, you can't, you know, the only way to control it completely is to own it. But to try to be able to allow the applicants to proceed with something they invested in, and potentially, if they're willing to work with us a little bit, maybe on any of those other conditions, I, I think that would be beneficial for us during this process.
You know, kind of hearing, you know, one of the thoughts of it being a convenience for, you know, boats, you know, not sure what we're going to call it, a gas station, but that, they're going to need the ability to fill up the boat. They're going to need to fit, you know, we're going to call it a convenience store, or whatever you want to call it, they're going to need to, to have ice, to have chips, or soda, or whatever, because I would, I would think, from, at least from what I heard from Mr. Beeler, was, you know, a, a, basically a one-stop shop, that you call up and say, hey, I want my boat ready, throw in all the, the trimmings and fixins, and, and they'd probably even go down to Kentucky Fried Chicken and get you a bucket. But, you know, so we want to be able to have, I don't want to see us.
Right, right, right.
Limit, you know, and, and is there a difference between that convenience store for, convenience store, convenience store for providing for customers? You know, are we getting into splitting hairs there?
And that, then that's what's hard, because it depends on who owns a piece of property, what can be done with, and that's what we're deciding on, but.
Right.
I got one question. What, would it be bad or good to, to reduce the size of the, the property to get it away from the neighborhood? You know what I'm saying? Come back, get it, let the western part stay the way it is and come back to, like where the L is now, come straight back there and zone that part?
To rezon less than the current property, we would require a survey that shows where that new zoning boundary would be. Of course, the applicant owns the entire tract. You know, it would impact setbacks, it's going to, it's going to impact impervious coverage, because the impervious coverage is going to be calculated on what's zoned commercially. So if suddenly you kick one acre off that western end, you've also impacted the amount of impervious that the, that they could develop out there.
If, if, Lisa, if, if they would be okay with removing the bar from one of the conditional uses, can they agree to that tonight, and we could proceed if we had the votes to do that? If they would take that one use out? If they're willing to do that?
They can agree to that this evening. What I would ask is that there's some notation, you know, we talked about how it has to be in writing, whether it's, you know, a note on the staff report, and Matthew can finalize it tomorrow, but, I mean, the applicant does need to agree to that offer and/or agree to that as a condition, you know, further limiting that.
So we better off to, to get them to, ask them that now, or table this to the next meeting, and let Matthew come back with a conditional agreement, or what would we?
Either way, the applicant can agree to it tonight if they're comfortable doing so. If they'd like to table it in order to consider your request tonight, that's up to them as well, and you all agree to that.
If, if we table it for two weeks, is that going to be detrimental?
Though, that you have closed the public hearing, so you're continuing, what you're tabling is the decision and any further discussion.
Right.
So it sounds like the applicant is willing to exclude bar from the use. I'll let him confirm that.
Yes, it's our intentions, and again, it, when you look at it, you try and put on there everything that you think that could happen or want to happen, or whatever, but my only concern when they, because we. concern when they, because we had the objection last meeting about that, is we don't have intention of doing a bar, and I know if that needs to be removed, I'm in full support of that and agreeing with your concerns and what the county's doing. I just don't want to limit it to a point where we can't have a convenience store, can't sell ice or beer or get, you know, whatever the people need there to facilitate their family outing on the weekend.
Right.
All right. Thank you for your open discussion on that, too. Appreciate that one.
I love you, thank you for coming.
So now we're, the staff report printed out? Do you have the staff report printed out?
I have the staff report. Sorry, Lisa.
If you have the staff report printed out, I think, at least for tonight, it's as simple as striking through bar and maybe asking Mr. Beeler to initial that, and then you can formalize it, just so that that...
Yeah, so I've got one that hasn't struck out that I could get him to sign tonight.
Okay. And I would just ask that whoever, if you're inclined to make a motion, that you note that revision or that additional...
Condition.
Yes.
Okay.
You're removing, that he's removed that as a permitted use.
Okay. Yes, sir. Go ahead. We're just trying to work this thing out.
Yes, I...
While we're being present, too.
Thanks, great, thank you. Is it possible, and I do understand their concern and want to take advantage of the full property with the watershed, but is it possible to put a contingency in there for the site plan that identifies that the structures and the location of the place of business will be on the eastern half, and the western half will be utilized for retention ponds or septic or whatever? Other stuff is not intrusive to the neighborhood, I do understand, and I respect them as property owners to be able to utilize their property for the value that they've invested in it. And I think that the plan that they've laid out is very respectful of us property owners as long as the contingency is in place to ensure that the place of business, where the traffic and the noise and, you know, whatever else may end up happening there, stays on the eastern portion, and we utilize that western portion to give them, you know, use of the property, which they have to take somehow, you know, if they have to put retention ponds, they have to put a septic system, whatever it may be. But just to ensure that that end of the property is used for that and the other end of the property is used for...
Matthew, you want to touch base on the site plan stuff?
I feel like that, that is what we all are saying we agree to, I just feel like we need to put something in place to ensure that that's what happens.
Matthew, you want to touch base on the site plan stuff?
Sure, so it's probably been roughly 10 years ago, we used to require a site plan with the conditional rezoning process. We changed that based off direction from the board to not require the site plan. So with those concerns, it is, it'd be difficult to figure out how to achieve those goals with a condition when there's not a site plan provided, and I don't think the applicant's in a position to put a site plan forward yet, which is what we had ran into before, because a lot of times people are trying to get property rezoned, find out for sure if they can do the use before they continue to dump money into a project. So it's the timing of it, without just picking a number out of air to say that they would stay a certain distance off that western boundary, it would be difficult if even the applicant was willing to.
Matthew, can you at least, can you cover what the buffers and setbacks would be? Because you're going from one zoning use to another, can you cover what that is allowable by ordinance?
Yeah, so...
That's all the problems that you have.
So that can be tricky, too. I mean, you're looking somewhere between a 10 and a 30-foot buffer against those residential uses, and then that really comes down to what the specific use is, if there's outdoor storage, the type of screening, but there would be screening buffering requirements along those residentially zoned properties. So that western property boundary, the southern property boundary, typically on a lot like this, you saw the aerial, it's existing vegetation, a lot of times they leave that, and if it doesn't meet the minimums, then we might ask them to add additional screening. But a lot of times you see that existing vegetation taken advantage of, and a lot of times the adjacent property owners would prefer the existing vegetation remain versus some new plantings. But again, we will ask them to add to that if needed. There's also the option of doing a fence as screening, as long as it would meet those requirements.
What's y'all's idea of just, I mean, is it going to be detrimental if we wait two more weeks to make the decision? That way y'all can get everything worked out, talk about buffers, talk about maybe adding some additional on there as far as buffers on that side? Is that a possibility, or...
Well, buffers, again, we're not going to know till they know exactly what the uses are. As far as excluding bars from the permitted uses, I've got the paper that they can sign before they leave that would accomplish that one.
I'm willing to make a motion tonight, so they don't have to come back if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning amendment and to expand the 2045 Horizon Plan corridor commercial designation, making a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2045 Horizon Plan and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest and furthers the goals of the 2045 Horizon Plan because it will result in expansion of an existing corridor commercial designation in which a portion of the property is already identified. The property is in close proximity to a variety of other existing commercial uses, and the conditions of the request aim to maintain safeguards for the surrounding landowners with one additional caveat or condition that they not be allowed to put a bar on the property.
Motion by Commissioner Halp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Now, brings us down to administrative matters that we covered during the four o'clock pre-agenda meeting, which I know a couple we flipped over to our meeting tonight at six, and I'd like to turn it over to the county manager.
Okay, thank you. If it's okay with the board, I'll go through all the consent, and then we'll go back through the ones that we pulled off the consent agenda. The first item was a request from administration to approve the reassignment of a current incentive agreement for Berry Plastics to Magnera, and that is the result of a merger between those two entities. Reappointment of deputy tax collectors pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 105, 349F to a four-year term ending June 30, 2029. A request for emergency management to approve a resolution to adopt the 2025 Ardel Rowan Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. A request from finance for approval of budget amendment number 39 to amend the JCPC funding plan to include fiscal year '24, '25 discretionary funds awarded to a Spira youth family in the amount of $26,746, and Barium Springs Children's Hope Alliance in the amount of $1,000, and to reallocate JCPC administrative funds to cover remaining salary expenses. A request from human resources for review of the pay incentive list, there were two changes. One was, there were actually two additions or two modifications. The one on that was to change the crew chief to $1,500 as opposed to the one that was on your sheet originally. So it would be to add crew chief at $1,500, and then the other one would be to add field training officer at $3,000. And then there was one wording change on the back, which is detention officer certification course instead of basic detention. So those were the two amendments. A request from the health department to confirm designation of child fatality prevention team, community child protection team, as a single county team. We did receive a presentation from Laura Johnson on the child fatality prevention team, and that was the annual report they required to give. We did review the county construction project updates, and that was just for informational purposes only. So all of those items were agreed by the board to place on the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the pre-agenda consent administrative matters? Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They all pass. And now county manager, we'll turn it back over to you, so you can do the ones we carried over to the six.
Absolutely. So the first item was a request from elections to approve, for approval of budget amendment number 38 to replace voting equipment. We did have some questions regarding the difference between compatibility and compliant, and I think Susie is here to answer any questions that the board may have. Caroline, I don't know if you want to, if you want to go through that presentation again, and if Susie, you want to answer questions, or if the board just wants to ask the questions that they had regarding this.
If Susie and Caroline both could approach, I think that would be good. Just go ahead and hit the top of it, and we can roll.
So as we presented at the four o'clock, the current voting equipment that we have is 13 years old, and we have plans to replace the voting equipment. We have been planning for it, put funds in the budget this current year for half of the estimated expense, and we're coming to ask for, to allocate the remaining estimated expense so that we can move forward now with replacing the voting equipment, which we currently have DS 200, and we're looking, the board of elections is recommending replacing it with DS 300s tabulators.
Susie, got anything you want to tell us or speak about, or...
I, you know, sent the email out earlier, and I think that pretty much covered everything that I wanted you all to understand of why we're asking for this, and that we are, you know, we did the research, that we are compliant. In the executive order, it never mentioned anything about being compatible. That word was not used in the executive order, so...
Y'all vetted this process, you had public meetings, you had meetings at the accident where people could come and everything.
Yes, we followed the steps. There's a very rigorous steps that we have to follow, and we did that. We even went above and beyond and went to some other counties to look at other equipment that is certified. So, you know, our goal is to provide integrity and security in our elections, and we would not ask of anything that would jeopardize that for this county.
Anybody got anything for Susie?
I appreciate everything. I've talked to Susie about this several times, and just getting feedback from the public and stuff. Susie and I talked before, we just want to put out all of our fires and dot our i's and cross our t's. My biggest question before was kind of a word salad, was the difference between compatible and compliant. But I think, looking at Susie's email to us, where there were questions during her public demonstration or whatever it was, that if we purchase the DS 300s this year, will there be an additional cost associated with the executive order that President Trump put out? And the concern on that was that, in the executive order, it says all existing certified voting systems must be recertified under amended WSG 2.0 standards or will be decertified within 180 days. I think you had mentioned when I talked to you earlier that the company in their contract said that if they have to be upgraded or anything, they would do that at no additional cost to the county. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that is correct. We pay an annual maintenance on our machines, and that would cover that.
I think that answers the question. I apologize you had to come, but I know you guys work really hard to assure the citizens of voter integrity and security of all of our systems, and we do that along with the administration. So I'd rather take a little extra time tonight to make people understand. You've done your due diligence and beyond with Lisa and Beth, and your board and your staff to make sure the citizens, at least in our county, can have full confidence in whatever system we have and process we have, that it will have integrity and legality to it. And so I just wanted to dot those i's and cross those t's. Thank you for coming. But I think it's important enough of an issue nationally to put people's minds at ease, because there's a lot of disinformation and misinformation out there. And I know everybody on this board agrees with me that we have a second to know, staff, you guys are awesome, and you go above and beyond the call of duty in every election to be fair and impartial, and we all appreciate that. And thank you for what you've done on this, because I think you've done everything you can do to ensure these systems that need to be replaced are going to be replaced, and that the security integrity are there. So I'm satisfied I asked the question at four, and thank you again for coming and clarifying that, because I think it puts to bed officially, publicly, the questions you guys have been asked in a smaller environment, and thank you for what you've done.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I know Karen Johnson's here tonight with you as well. I'm going to tell you and her both thank you, and your staff thank you, because y'all do a tremendous job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
It's a very, very important job, one of the most important jobs ever in this, in our country, to be honest with you, and we appreciate it.
Thank your board and everybody. We have the utmost respect and trust in your guys' ability to have a fair and impartial election, every election. I've been around for 20 years, and everybody that's been there before and there now, y'all go above and beyond to make sure those processes are legit and legal.
Well, thank you.
Karen, you want to speak? You're good.
She just said amen.
We appreciate you guys, and we appreciate that you have the confidence.
I apologize for the confusion, but I'd rather dot the i's and cross the t's, and that way you and your board don't have to potentially put out fires later during an election or something, somebody asking these questions. For the record, the machines are going to do what we need them to do.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Nobody else? Do we have a motion?
Most approve.
Motion to approve, make sure I get this right, request for elections for approval of budget amendment number 38 to replace the voting equipment, motion by Commissioner Halp.
Halp.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from the purchasing division for consideration of offer and for the adoption of resolution to sell the Bluefield Road property by upset bid, and Ms. Antonia Steins is here to make this presentation to the board at the six o'clock hour.
Coming back to present to the board an offer received for $750,000 for the Bluefield property. That would be an initial offer to start an upset bid process. In the four o'clock hour, I did provide information about the Bluefield and kind of our history with the upset bid process, and I believe there were questions about advertisement, and I did happen to find those and dig them up, and would like to share them at this time. My history stepping into the purchasing officer role, I got to participate in three rounds of the upset bid process, one of them I did not touch, but for the ones that I did, we had a, back in 2023, we had four rounds of upset bidding, and I was generous in my estimation, the cost for advertisement was $285, and depending on the words that were used and the count, they were consistent in that range. So for four upset bid round, the total cost for advertisement was $859.10. The one that I had mentioned, that was a 10 round, it was actually nine, but that was back in 2021. And the last one that I presented here was actually a rejection, so we didn't go through any upset bid processing. For each round, it is a period of time that is waited for, and it's a bid opening, public, so we reserve room for anybody who wants to sit in and view the opening of the upset bids. Everything is communicated with the individual bidders, so there's a lot of communication and email, make sure everybody's on the same page as far as moving forward with either the next upset bid, or if there are no more bids received, preparing documentation for the board to review the process and make a decision. What's laid before us today is the board's review and decision on whether or not they want to accept this offer as an initial offer to start this upset bid process.
Antonia, thank you for going back and getting that information. And I maybe should have went, because your answer made me want to ask another question. Besides just the upfront cost of that advertising, how much time, how much time is staff investing each time that we do that upset bid process? Where you, I know you're busy. How much more time does that add in taking you away from performing other duties? Because you've got to do those things. So how much time each time would you say that you or county staff as a whole spends just on each upset bid process?
From my experience with it, if there's only ever been one person to manage the upset bid process, so the officer or the agent at the time would invest their time into it, my time is spent mostly to make sure the invest their time into it, my time is spent mostly to make sure the process is being adhered and we're being transparent. So for me, I'm a high rotor, so I like to make sure that I'm doing every step the way it ought to. So I think perhaps I might invest a little bit more time to make sure that when I'm presenting this to the board, they're receiving every detail that they need to make their decision. Most of it is setting up advertisement, verifying information, communicating with bidders. That does take some time, especially when there's email space and then you have to turn around and respond. And then also making sure that administration is informed on every upset bid documentation, which I started that process when I took over. So that way the county manager and the county attorney would be able to see the results of every upset bid and then provide any guidance or advice to me as I move forward.
For me, Mr. Chairman, historically on that property down there, that property was donated. We have previously agreed that the funding that we do receive, once we sell this property, is going to roll over and pay for Jennings Park projects or additional needs up there at the investment we've made up there. Both times we've agreed or almost had the property sold or had a contract on the property, it's been almost at or exceeded $2 million. So we as a board set a minimum bid that we would consider of 1.5 million. Anything less than that, I think we're wasting our time and our staff's time unless the majority of the board disagrees that we want to lower that threshold. So for me to support any offer, it would have to be at least the 1.5 we've set as a board to start the upset bid process. I think we're sending a mixed message. If our goal is to do the best we can for our citizens because we're going to reinvest that money into other investments, I think we're wasting our staff's time to accept this bid and to allow them to waste their time and even the potential buyers because they need to realize that we are serious, that our minimum starting point is 1.5. And for me, I'm against this for that reason.
Any other discussion?
Well, you know, throw mine out there. I'm, you know, as a, I'm an auctioneer myself and I buy a lot of properties and do things and I'm, for one, I always, I lowball. I mean, that's just the way it is and, and I know Mr. How also buys cars and stuff.
I don't blame them.
That's right. So we, we do play as much as we can and, and I'm, I'm a firm believer, you get it started. As an auctioneer, I know when I start an auction, it's gonna, I gotta come down to get them to go back up and, and it always brings what it's worth. But I just want to get something started on this property. So as, as my say is, we need to start somewhere. If we're serious about selling it, we need to start somewhere. But I know we set up, set it for 150.
1.5.
1.5. But I just think that we should get it started.
Anything less than that's a lowball. I get what you're saying.
Any other discussion?
It's just opinions.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to reject the offer as presented.
Motion by Commissioner How. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Commissioner How's motion passes to reject.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Antonia. County Manager back again.
Absolutely. So we have one more item and that is a resolution opposing House Bill 765 of the North Carolina General Assembly and changes to the local planning and zoning. And this has been a very hot topic of conversation. I know that Chair Conley and Vice Chair Neder and I, along with Matthew Todd, attended the radio show with Representative McNeely yesterday to talk about this. There was a committee meeting this, this afternoon at noon to talk about this as well. This has gone through a couple of different revisions for this House bill and the title has changed, but it is still a, a, in my opinion, a, a bill that overreaches and does one size fits all decisions that have to be applicable to all local jurisdictions. And unfortunately, one size does not fit all. And I know that we've had several discussions about it and I know that there's been a lot of conversations. So this is actually an official resolution opposing. I know that Chair Conley wrote a letter expressing the dissatisfaction to that bill and why. And a lot of jurisdictions are adopting resolutions, so we have created this resolution for the bill, for the board to consider. And I'll certainly open it up to any comments that the board may have.
I do have a comment. We just had an open discussion with a rezoning this evening discussing that one. If this House bill were to pass, would that conversation been able to happen right here locally?
Well, I think this, I, I think yes, because I think that that was commercial. So this House bill really deals with residential. Now, if it was a residential developer, I would look for our attorney and say it might be a different story. But since this was commercial, I think, I think that commercial is not really covered in House Bill 765, but I'm looking to our attorney confirm that.
Kind of clear the differences on that.
But who's to say at the last second, they don't add something else in there like they've been on this one and taken away and then trying to put, you know, lipstick on the pig and it's still a pig.
But since it was a commercial rezoning.
Yes, if it had been residential and you all were having discussions about sidewalks or density or architectural details of the houses or materials and things like that, you, you could not have that discussion anymore after that bill is passed.
So this bill would definitely impact development, opening the door, because we sit at, what, two houses per acre?
Mm-hmm.
Based off, we got the 2045 plan. This resolution would give that control to the state to dictate the number of houses could go on to an acre, looking at between four to six houses per acre for every county in the state? Are we still narrowing that down?
I'm gonna look to Matthew to, to add.
I've asked a lot of questions out of you, Matthew Todd. Thank you for always being prepared.
Thank you for sticking around, Matthew.
Yeah. So the most, so it does say for our population, I don't remember the breakdowns, but it'd be five units, five residential units per acre is what one of the versions, several of the versions have said. I believe the most recent one does kick the county, Arden County out of that because I think it says you have to have a population of 275,000 before that still happens. But I still see it as a slippery slope because if it, if it gets in there, then it's affecting every county with 275,000. Next year, that number can get dropped and as you know, as fast as we're growing, if it drops to 250.
Absolutely.
225, I mean, it's not that long before we would be there and it would, would impact us.
We'll be at the 275 within five, 10 years.
Sherman, you want my comments now?
Vice Chair, do you care to read it in the record, the resolution? That way everybody kind of knows and then we're going to go comments and there.
Let's read this resolution in the record and then let's continue discussion because I know we all have. This is a very heartfelt discussion that needs to take place with that one. So yes, thank you. Resolution opposing House Bill 765 of the North Carolina General Assembly and changes to local planning and zoning. Whereas House Bill 765 has been introduced in the 2025 session of the North Carolina General Assembly. And whereas the bill could undermine the fundamental authority for local planning and zoning and the critical ability of local elected officials to manage community growth based on the will of their citizenry. Whereas local governments have made in-person attendance and comment easier for proponents and opponents of zoning decisions, thereby allowing citizens to participate in matters that affect them through the public hearing process. And whereas the bill effectively mandates many planning and zoning decisions, including residential densities, that are now made by local governments through the public participation process, hindering the local government's ability to uphold public health, safety and welfare. And whereas the bill would largely undo years of thoughtful and consistent local land use planning and regulation, remove necessary regulatory standards and in many cases allow unregulated development inconsistent with the local, local planning, current local planning and zoning ordinances. And whereas the bill would limit development regulations to only that which is specifically prescribed by the General Assembly. And whereas the bill would establish conditions whereby local board members would have personal, individual, civil liability for decisions, which could have a chilling effect on discouraging well-intentioned individuals from serving in public office or on public boards. And whereas the bill would allow certain parties to bring a claim against development regulations and adds to the list of parties that would standing, would have standing to bring such a claim, which would increase litigation costs for local government. And whereas this bill is in direct contradiction to the longstanding requirement for local governments to meet the minimum standards and the parameters set forth in the state governments, in the state legislation, but with the ability for local governments to refine and customize their ordinances based upon local community characteristics, constraints and practices while never less restrictive. Now therefore be it resolved that the Arden County Board of Commissioners urges the North Carolina General Assembly to leave planning and zoning decisions to locally elected boards and their citizens. And that the North Carolina General Assembly immediately terminate House Bill 765 and any other related or similar bills that would undermine the rights of local citizens and their elected representatives to make zoning rules for their communities as they see fit. And be it signed the sixth day of May 2025 and you will see your name as a five of us will sign this document. Thank you, Chair Conley.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion, I'll start on this side because I figured everybody would want a piece of this.
I served the District 12 for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, which is eight counties in the state. We had an emergency meeting in Raleigh for other reasons on Friday and while we were there, we were able to discuss this bill particularly. I want to give you some breakdowns of it and tell you some things that are distasteful and that turns my stomach politically that our colleagues are participating in Raleigh. When I was in Raleigh, the other day Beth and I talked multiple times and others talked, you know, in 20 some years, Beth mentioned this bill would take away, if there was legislation or statute that requires a, a certain standard. In all the years past, we were always able, local entities were always labeled, able to add additional and further restrictions to their zoning. This would take that away. You mentioned the personal liability, you know, let those people put liability on themselves, look in the mirror when you're wanting to make a bill, you know, it's, it's another unfunded mandate. I know and I agree that there may be some good things in the bill that are helpful, but everyone agrees that you should do that on a local level. Municipalities, counties, do local things that, that enable you to do that. Today, the Director of the NCAACC and anybody there to speak against the bill, they did what they call, they run the clock out. So nobody was able to speak. I want to read into the record the comments that the Executive Director would have read at that meeting and then I had a couple other things, but today, the dishonest things during their discussion today, Representatives on the House floor said, and, and with a red herring, which is intentionally misleading, I'm going to call it a lie, that said the League of Municipalities and the County Commissioners Association support this bill. They mentioned a study that, that was done in 2023 that showed a support for affordable housing. And then they said that, that both organizations support this bill and that's not true, that's a lie. And let's be honest, this bill that they have today, they've changed the name, some kind of American whatever act, you've got people there.
A Z American dream.
That if it's not illegal for them to, to do a bill that benefits them personally, it's at a minimum unethical. I'm going to call it what it is. But, you know, to say that this is about affordable housing, they can do that right now, all they want to. There's just guidelines that the builders have to go by, just like in a commercial build, but they want to strip you from that. Let's be honest, you know what this is about? Stripping local control away from decisions. And we've said it many years, the people in this county, on this board, we impact people's life on a daily basis more than any other board because we are here with the people. And a lot of people think we have authorities we don't have, we hear it every day, but our goal is to help them and have the contacts for people. But for people to stand on the House floor today and say that we're supportive of a bill we're not, to misrepresent the facts of a study that was done by two respected organizations and to run the clock out so nobody could speak against or for the bill, today is wrong. These remarks are by Kevin Leonard. He sent me an email that he's sending out to all of the county commissioners throughout the state and they want us to share this. It was his remarks today, had he been allowed to read them on House Bill 765. It says, "Thank you Chairman and Members of the Committee. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on House Bill 765. We recognize the complexity of the jurisdictional boundaries among federal, state and local governments. However, this bill directly impacts an area that we feel is clearly under the authority of local government, land use and development. County commissioners are elected by their residents to make decisions that shape the growth, development and character of their communities. This bill removes or at best diminishes that core responsibility. HB 765 would override local decision-making and remove elected county officials from the process of determining how their counties grow, a role that were specifically chosen by voters to fulfill. It is a state responsibility or local responsibility? That's the question. Is it a state or a local responsibility for those decisions? That is what you're debating and deciding in this legislation. As we say often, if you've been to one county, you've been to one county. They're all different. There are 100 counties and every county is different. And what that key reason why we're elected officials say reflect the wishes of people who live there. We acknowledge and appreciate that many concerning provisions from earlier drafts have been removed after discussions with the bill sponsors and Home Builders Association. However, we remain concerned about provisions that persist, particularly those mandating residential density requirements in certain counties and the provisions that provide legal standing to trade associations to sue local governments. That seems highly concerning, especially if results in costly legal battles funded by the taxpayers. While the bill now applies to fewer, more populous counties, we continue to oppose any rollback of local control in this area. As it, at its core, this is about preserving the authority of local elected officials to represent the will of their communities, the level of government closest to the people. For those reasons, we must respectfully oppose House Bill 765." He was not allowed to read that into the record today. And when I talked to Kevin, Kevin is a very mild-tippered individual, but he was very frustrated that that was not allowed to be done and he was very frustrated that colleagues would step on the House floor and misrepresent or outright lie that the Home Builders Association or the County Commissioners Association and the League of Municipalities support this bill and we don't. There's, they've had plenty of official and unofficial conversations with all of us, all of our representatives. And to Burt's point, you can put lipstick on that pig, but it's still a pig. This is bad business. If there's some local things good in it, do it locally. Make those decisions locally. But I wanted you guys to know, you know, we were in Raleigh Friday, the work that Beth, Lisa, everybody has done to oppose this and try to get the details of it. It, it is, I think it's dishonest. We've asked all of our elected officials to oppose this. Understand they have to work with these people, but when somebody goes up there and, and I talked to Representative McNeely, he was originally a sponsor, he may not be now, but he was. So, and he says, so he could help talk about it, but you've got to be able to stand up for what your people want. And we gave Pat Harrigan a plaque from the Men's Club that says, remember who sent you there. And so the people of Arden County sent them there and I, I appreciate Mitchell Satcher, he has the smallest portion of our county, but he is in agreement, at least so far with this bill not being a good bill. So I hope they all oppose it at the right time. But also today, the, the last underhanded thing procedurally, it's called gamesmanship, they changed the price of something in the bill from 120 to 125. What that does for people that don't know that procedurally, this is what's called crossover week, where bills cross from the House to the Senate. By raising the rate on that, in that bill, it bypasses the requirement that it crosses over to the Senate today, which keeps the Senate from getting their hands on it, killing it, whatever. And I think, I think while procedurally that's legal, I think it's underhanded and dishonest. My opinion. I won't speak on your behalf, but I will say, I think it's dishonest. It's an intentional effort to mislead and lie about the support of this bill to get it done. The people sponsoring the bill should be ashamed of themselves because it personally benefits their business or their livelihood and they're doing it to take away regulations from our citizens. Because if higher density and all these things come, as I've argued with them Friday and I was probably rude to some, but you know, we have to up county services for all the county services, the landfill, the schools that were required by law to build when you have the unchallenged growth. We've got water sewer capacity issues. law to build, when you have the unchallenged growth, we've got water sewer capacity issues we're learning about now. The residential growth needs to stop or slow until we can meet the infrastructure needs. This bill totally takes that authority away from us. So I'm for this resolution and against this bill. I wanted you guys to know for the record that there's some dishonest shenanigans going on in Raleigh, and it don't settle good with me. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
I'm just glad to have had the honor to read this one. I'm disheartened and I'm concerned. We have chosen to serve because we care about the people of this community, and what have we heard a lot about is growth. This allows houses even to be built in an area that's been zoned commercial. It's pushing us backwards, not forwards. Passing on down.
So as I read and learned more about this, I happened to be in another part of the world and had a conversation with someone who oddly, our paths crossed. He was a gentleman that was military but from another country. We had a lot of same interests. So as we talked, and he found out, you know, what I did as a second career in veteran services, and created a friendship, a bond, and we started talking about that I'd chosen to get into local government politics, if you will. And so as we talked, you know, this, we were in a place, there was no internet, no TV, everybody knows I love to talk, and so did he. And so he asked me one of the things, he said, "What are some of the things, you know, that's facing your area now? What are some of the big decisions as county commissioners?" And I said, "One of our is our growth, and our home values have exploded." And he explained to me, and his country had gone through the same thing, that their values had gone up, some of them five times, not five percent, five times their value. So, you know, and we continued on, and we talked about another topic that may or may not someday come before this board. And he gave me a unique perspective from another place in the world. Well then, I get back to my feet and US soil, and I start reading this bill, and I'm laying there at night, and I read, I'm going to read from a section that came from it, and I don't know if this is still a part of it, but this was, as Commissioner Hout stated, the underhandedness of Raleigh. It says, "Would establish personal, civil," this is directly from House Bill 765, "would establish personal, individual, civil liability for any board member who engages in impermissible violations of due process, semicolon, considers evidence which is other material gained outside of an evidentiary hearing." Now what in the world does that mean to a dumb country soldier? That's me going out, if I want to know something about law enforcement, I'm probably going to ask Commissioner Hout, Commissioner Conley, or Officer Burns. If I want to know something about purchasing, I'm probably going to go talk to Antoni. So this is telling me that it'd be wrong for me to go looking and asking questions that someone didn't think I needed to know, that basically I needed to make decisions based upon the information they gave me. That's not making decisions, that's that leading down the path, and I just can't do it. And the other is, I'm going to be very pointed, and I'm in the same thread with Commissioner We have a, one of our elected officials that was signed on as a sponsor, may or may not be, the record officially still shows they are, and I know someone asked him the question point blank, "Did you sponsor that bill?" And the answer was no. Wait a minute. I go back to, again, I'm going to really tout what Commissioner Hout said, is, is it legal? But it might be legal, but is it moral? Is it right? And this, this is hard enough deal already. I don't, we don't need to make it easier for developers and home builders, we need to be making it better and easier for property owners. You know, we struggle already through the process of, you know, the old adage of, what's the best vitamin for being a good neighbor? Be one, right? That's the best vitamin, right? Be a good neighbor, to be a good neighbor, you gotta have a good neighbor, you gotta be a good neighbor. And it's hard enough already. You know, we all want what we want, and it's what we want is perfect until it doesn't exactly, until someone moves beside us and wants to do something different. I'm huge on property owner rights. But again, to be one, to have one, you gotta be one. And this is going to take it away from us, being able to have any civilized discussion in these chambers, because our voice and the voices of Iredell County residents will be muted. This is the last place that the voice of the people is heard in open form that's recorded. I mean, you have, arguably, the NCACC is one of the largest groups in Raleigh, and couldn't even get a voice to speak and say something in the legislature. What do you think mine or your chances are to go down there and give our opinion? This is the last place. This is it. And we've got to, we've got to hold on to that. It's not that we want power, it's that we want what's best for the people of this county. And the people of this county know what's best, because they can come and share it with us. It's all good.
Mr. Brown.
Well, you know, I agree with everybody here, and it's overreach, and it's, you know, we're, Ronald Reagan said it the best about, you know, giving up, you know, more government is less freedom. And, you know, and I was on the radio show sometime last week, week four, I don't remember what it was, but I was arguing about this with some representatives, and especially the major guy that was sponsoring this bill. And they were talking about, one of the things they brought up was in, like, 1990, they bought new homes, and it cost them $90,000. And then today, that new, same new homes will cost them $250,000, and they were complaining. They said, "We gotta get back to that." You're never going to get back to that. You're, this, you know, average heating system in 1990 was $3,000 bucks, today it's $10,000 bucks. The average car in 1990 was $15,000 bucks, today it's $50,000 bucks. The average house today is $300,000 versus $100,000. Everything has went up, and I hate to say it, people are going to get mad at me, but, you know, houses for years have been cheap. It's the cheapest thing an American could buy, because when you buy a car for $50,000 in five years, it's, you're gone. A house, you pay $300,000 for it, in five years, it's going to be worth $400,000. It makes you money, it's investment. So it's the biggest investment we make, but to say that we want more low income, it's not, it's not the answer. And to take away, like I said, the people put us here, the people of this county, you know, they look at us, I tell people all the time when they call and complain, I said, "Did you vote for me?" And they say, "Yeah." I said, "So you trust me?" And they say, "Yeah." I said, "Well, let me do my job." You know, don't believe what you hear, let us do our job, and we're fighting this bill, because we have all talked, and this is probably the worst thing we've ever seen come from our state of North Carolina.
Just a, Commissioner Conley, before you speak, just a little quick alibi. And the other thing I want to say, and Commissioner Brown, you brought to my, something I wanted to say and kind of got left, is we talk about affordable housing, and sometimes that's turned and used to the term of entry-level housing, or, you know, that folks can move right into. The problem today is, I'm blessed I was able to purchase back the home that Reden Darsstroud built in 1956. When we talk about starter homes or entry-level homes now, we didn't have central heat or air. And now, it's, and I say this, we're in a microwave society, everyone, everybody wants every option that they're humanly possibly can, wants a dishwasher, you know? My dad said it came with a dishwasher, Dars. But wants a dishwasher, wants central heat and air. I'm 100% supportive of the American dream, but it's also living within your own means.
That's right.
And we've priced it to the point that you're saying people don't want to build. My mom and dad knew that wasn't going to be their forever home. That's the new term now. So it's entry-level homes, and then there's the forever home. And you've got to understand that if you're 25 or even sometimes 40 years old, maybe you can't start at your dream home, you start at your beginner home, and you have less amenities, because you're going to live within your means, or build or buy within your means.
I know when this bill started being talked about, I spoke to all four of y'all as well, and Beth. I just clicked the sponsors and the co-sponsors. One of the sponsors is a general contractor and developer, the second one's a contractor, next one's a home builder, the next one's a commercial real estate broker, another one's a real estate person, another one's a real estate investor, building contractor, another one's a general contractor, and another one's a real estate consultant. Those are, I got that information off the North Carolina General Statute, the General Assembly website, by clicking the bill sponsor, and it shows your occupation. I have nothing, no issue with contractors, developers, real estate people, brokers, anybody. Everybody's here for a purpose, everybody's here to do a thing, everybody's here to make a dollar and to make a living and to develop our counties, cities, and towns, but this here is complete overreach. We seen it today, I know me and Commissioner Hout talked about it for a minute, I watched a little bit of it today, and it was just, it was sad on what was being done. It's basically just squeeze out the people who have a voice, who have a stake in this, and put it with certain people, and it's sad, it really, really is.
Explains why we can't get impact fees too.
Yes, and if you want to, yeah, if you want to do something, do impact fees, that if you have a growing community, that it helps do the school. You know, really, we have impact fees, I guess you can say, but it's impacting the people who have lived here, who are presently here, who want to try to keep things relatively in check, but, you know, it's just, and, you know, we don't control what happens in Troutman, what happens in Mooresville, what happens in Stachville. I've been very vocal, when I ran, I've been very vocal as Commissioner, that we need to have balanced, managed growth, because we've got some decisions to make, and I think the county manager will discuss it here in a little while, about schools, and building schools, education. I mean, there's so many things we've got on our doorstep, from courthouse expansion, everything that we've got to do, sheriff's office expansion, there's just so much stuff we have to do. How many schools are going to be coming down the pipe? We're trying to set a tax rate, trying to put it with a reevaluation year, we try to plan out. And it's hard to plan it out when Raleigh's trying to get in the driver's seat to control everything and anything that we try to do. And who's going to run for office if you can get sued for every little step that you make? I mean, who's going to do that? Who's going to be wanting to get on the planning board, Matthew Todd? I mean, who's going to be wanting to get on any committee we got? I mean, you know, we can get sued for anything and everything, you know, people line up every day, we're sued now for stuff. But the thing of it is, is this is not the American way. To have a, what I sometimes call the Crystal Palace in Raleigh, to dictate what everybody's going to do, and it's just not Iredell County. Stachville did a resolution, I hope Moore will do a resolution, but if you just look on Facebook, just Google, "House Bill 765," the town a kitty hawk. I mean, they were, they were out against this thing. It's not just us, it's not just anybody, but you need to look at the drivers of this thing, and just look at the, look at the mailers you get in the mailbox. Look at the mailers when people run for a House office or federal office, look who pays for it, especially in the Raleigh side of things, whether it's Senator House. It's homeowners association, home builders association, real estate group, somebody, somebody's paying for these mailers. And I guarantee you, somebody's out with somebody right now, taking them out to eat, buying them a steak, and buying them some drinks and stuff from some of these groups. Guarantee it's going on right now. But I feel it is a privilege to sit up here with you all and the staff that wants to try to have a voice for the people of this damn county, and I'm sorry, but it's very, very important to us not to just sit back, not to just let people steamroll us. And that's something that we are determined not to do. And it's just crazy. And to think that you've got people that sit up here, that get an office down in Raleigh that has sat here and understands exactly what we go through. I mean, we lose sleep over our decisions, but everything that we make up here touches you, just like everything down there. They need to be worried about DMV office. Why do people have to wait six to eight months, 10 months to get their driver's license? I mean, really? Let's fix the problems of DOT. Do y'all remember the $300 million that they overshot and they had all the problems back several years back? $300 million, that's what they need to worry about. They need to worry about locking up people, passing laws that are good laws, that prey on people, that go out here and just create menace in our society. They're the ones that need to pass the laws that we can lock these people up, send these people to prison. If they want to do something worthwhile and get their name on a plaque somewhere, pass the law that our court dockets can't be set the way they're set right now. Set it that the presiding judge sets the court docket, based on him or her, her schedule, and what she can do and do. Let's quit the backlog. There's a lady sitting back here, Susan Robertson, and she knows the position that I've been in, and she's been in for many, many decades, and look at the money that we have wasted and spent. If you want to do something worthwhile in Raleigh, why do we take an inmate to a hospital? We pay double the Medicaid rate. But if that individual's out here, if we arrest Scotty today, he's double the Medicaid rate if he goes to jail, if he's on Medicaid. But if he's out, he only pays just the Medicaid rate, not twice the Medicaid rate. I mean, why in the world do we do that? Why in the world do they pass a law that we have to have an inmate that's in safekeeping? The reason I'm getting on this soapbox is because we spend almost $2 million this year on inmate medical care. Why did they pass a law that we have to use a specific company to scrub the bills, and then they get a certain percentage for scrubbing them? When we already have a provider that scrubs them for free? I mean, if you want to do something worthwhile, do something worthwhile, do something to get your name on something, other than waiting to see who's going to give you a campaign contribution, who's going to pay for you to go somewhere, do something, you know, it's just, and there's just so many things that they scrub that we have to comply with, public records laws and things of that nature, that they don't have to. I mean, we done a change in Washington, and there's a slight change in Raleigh, but I can't see nothing in Raleigh happening right now, but it's going against what our American way is, and they can save the American dream or whatever they want to do, but no, this is to put money in folks' pockets, make it easier for people to come in here. Can't you imagine if you went in here and told Stachville, okay, your stuff's gone? You've got an industrial park, but the person who owns this down here, they will put residential there. We're going to put so much residential that we're not going to have a place for a company to come here. We're not going to have a place for industry to come here. We're not going to have a place for anybody to come here that's actually going to pay taxes. All we're going to have is residential, we're going to have to build more schools, more DSS, more health department, and you're going to sit in traffic. And this is going to result in tax increase across the state for all the locals. You know, they can boast all day long, we've lowered income tax, we did this and do that. Look at the fees that you pay when you renew your registration of your vehicle. I mean, just go back for the last couple of years and look, the fees make up the difference for, you know, it's like I said a while ago, and Jean hit on it as well, you know, you can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. So I'll get off my soapbox, anybody got anything else? Staff got anything?
Do we need to make a motion to accept that resolution? Sorry.
Everybody good? Attorney, you got anything to say, Ms. Baudes?
No, sir.
Okay, everybody good? Okay, I'm sorry, we get on our soapbox, but we are very-
Reminder that the people that sponsor this, they're electeds too.
Yes, they are elected.
They are elected, a lot of times they run unopposed.
And a lot of these people are not even from this county.
That's right.
You know, if you've got a problem with this bill, and you're watching, and you're listening, or you're here, just don't contact our folks, contact folks all over this state, because you've got people in Mecklenburg County, Wake County, Guilford County, down east, everyone that impacts what you do here. You know, you think that you sent our people down there, they're going to represent and do and do and do, but they've got to have the support of everybody else. And I know they've got a hard job, but we got an even more hard job, and I will give us credit, we listen to the people of this county.
What do you like us shutting down our public comment period and not letting people talk, and then saying something that's untrue on the record, and there's, and not allowing anybody to speak against it or for it?
Absolutely.
I mean, that's crazy.
But it's like tonight, I mean, it was commercial, but had it been residential. I mean, you left, neither person left with everything, but they left where it was at least workable, you know, that they could be heard, and it was done right here in front of us. When Raleigh, it's over.
So do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we move forward and send this resolution to Raleigh.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud to adopt the resolution opposing House Bill 765. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes, 5-0. County Manager, I think that gets everything in our agenda correct on that section, as far as what we need to cover.
It does.
So that's going to bring us down to the announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and committees. and commissions, and I'll turn it over to you to cover those.
Thank you. We have six appointments with the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, we have six appointments with the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one appointment Troutman Board of Adjustment, ETJ representative, four appointments Centralina Aging Advisory Committee, Region F, one appointment with the Mooresville Planning Board, which is an ETJ member, two appointments Mooresville Board of Adjustment, ETJ member, and one appointment with the Aridale County JCPC.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody that's interested in serving in any of those capacities, please fill out an application, it's on our website, or you can contact our clerk to the board to get an application.
Those are the announcements of-
These are the announcements of vacancies that we have.
Tonight are coming.
Appointments are coming, it's the next item.
And it brings us down to the appointments to the boards and commissioners, I think we have a few of those tonight. If you want to go ahead and hit those.
Yes, absolutely, yes. So four appointments. We have a Centralina Workforce Development Board, we have two reappointments, and that's Todd Williams, which is representing the public education sector, and then Richard Hill, which is representing organized labor sector. Those two individuals are reappointments, they've agreed to serve again. And then we have one new appointment, we actually had a member that we had appointed that passed away, so we need to appoint someone to fulfill that term, and we had a total of three applicants to serve in that, in that seat. The Centralina Workforce Development Board has received a nomination packet from Aridale County Economic Development Corporation for Adam Stewart, and that is the one that they are recommending of the three individuals, and that would be to fulfill that unexpired term.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the Centralina Workforce Development Board as presented by Manager Milton.
So that would be Todd Williams, Richard Hill, and the recommendation of Adam Stewart?
Yes, correct.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved.
We do have another one, which is the Centralina Region F Aging Advisory Committee. We have one appointment and Barbara Barrier has agreed to serve in that capacity.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Centralina Region F Aging Advisory Council Committee.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is approved.
Thank you, and then one more. Troutman Planning Board, ETJ, we have two reappointments. Randy Farmer and Barry General have both agreed to serve again and the town board has recommended.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion we approve Troutman Planning Board, the two guys that are, continue to run, to serve.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. And if anybody don't have an objection, can we take a 10-minute recess?
Yes.
One quick question before we do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Just on note to some of these applicants that have checked boxes to serve in any of the capacities, we will hold on to those applications if we have openings, because a lot of times folks will apply for one, and if they don't get it, that they're still safe for other opportunities to serve.
Yes, we keep them on file for six months.
Okay.
We're on a 10-minute recess.
Please, sir.
Okay, we just took a 10-minute recess, probably a few minutes longer. We needed to catch up on a couple breaks here, so let's turn it back in our agenda. And anybody have any unfinished business? Anybody got anything?
I'm sorry, what did you?
Any unfinished business? You get anything? Okay. Public comment period is not this meeting, it'll be our next meeting, and it brings us down to Commissioner updates. Does anyone have anything? For Commissioner updates? Any new business? Brings us down to the County Manager's Report, and I think County Manager, you have a lot to talk about.
I do have a lot to talk about. So, this is the meeting where I present the annual budget recommendation to the Board. So, and I'm sorry, but I take a little bit more time than I normally do, and I actually read the budget message into the record. And I think it's important because the budget message, it tells a story. It tells a story about where we've been, it tells a story about what's included in this budget and why, and it tells a story about what kind of we see coming forward as far as challenges. So, I have a couple of slides that are actually in the budget message, so I'm going to put it up on the screen and try to flip through that as I read. But, and it's interesting, as I was listening to the comments about House Bill 765 and some of the comments from the Board, you'll see some of those sentiments echoed in this budget message, because as you said, that's a big deal that's going to impact this whole county and this whole state moving forward. So, we have to be cognizant of the impacts of that. So, with no further ado, I'm going to go ahead and read the message into the record. "To the Arden County Board of Commissioners and Citizens, the creation of the 2025-26 fiscal year budget has been challenging. We began preparation five months ago, which required a great deal of forecasting to create a balanced and a fiscally conservative budget. During this budget preparation, we looked and planned on a four-year cycle which coincides with reappraisal. The goal is to set aside or set a tax rate in the first year of that cycle that remains unchanged for the next four years. In years three and four, it traditionally becomes increasingly more difficult as expenses begin to outpace revenues. This fiscal year budget is year three of that cycle. Our financial practices are guided by three key principles. We are a pay-go county, which is a key strength that contributes to our strong fiscal solvency. This means we typically borrow money for school capital projects yet pay cash for all other county capital projects. Fund balance fluctuations are the norm with this practice, as we save funds until we have enough to complete the county capital project. This minimizes the debt the county carries and increases our bond rating, but it also opens us up for criticism over the amount of money in our fund balance during the saving years. This practice also creates opportunities for those funds to be reallocated for other purposes, which further delays those needed projects. Two, we do not balance our budget by using fund balance for reoccurring operational expenses. Living out of fund balance year after year depletes those funds, which limits our ability to pay cash for capital projects. It also initiates the practice of living above our means, which ultimately leads to a tax increase. And three, we understand we must take care of our greatest asset, our staff. As a service organization, we provide those services through our people. Remaining focused on staff recruitment and retention is our guiding principle, because Arden County citizens deserve top-level service from knowledgeable and qualified staff. With these key principles in mind, we strive to budget conservatively while also ensuring we address the needs of our citizens and the demands placed on us as a high-growth county. Our 2025 population increased to an estimated 207,382 people, an 11.51% increase from 2020, ranking us among the top 10 fastest-growing counties in the state. Our parcel count has grown from 98,698 in 2020 to 107,620 in 2025. That's a 9.04% increase. This is directly attributed to the increase in building activity throughout our county. We've experienced an 18.06 overall increase in building permits issued from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25, with most of those permits issued for residential units. With new residents coming, then the ban for new school facilities and increased services. Over the past year, Arden County experienced 11% increase in Medicaid recipients and food and nutrition service applications. Special assistance in home cases, which are individuals that try to remain in the home versus a nursing home, increased 28%, and guardianship cases increased 55%. These statistics depict the impact a growing population has on just one of our 25 different county departments, all of which are striving to do more with less. According to the North Carolina State Demographer, Arden County's population is expected to increase 8.8% over the next five years, and North Carolina is on pace to become the seventh-largest state in the country. Additionally, our erosion and sediment control permits have increased 29.06% over the past year, which further confirms the magnitude of growth coming to Arden County. While growth is positive, it must be well-balanced and thoughtfully managed through a good mix of residential and commercial, all of which must be planned for. If growth happens too quickly and we're not balanced, it could cause a drain on emergency services, congestion on our road network, depletion of our utilities, and overcrowding of our schools. Over the past year, Arden County Economic Development Corporation announced seven projects totaling over 121 million in proposed investment, the creation of 267 jobs, and 1.5 million square feet through a mix of new and expanding industries. Our partnership with Arden EDC ensures that our community grows in a diversified way while focusing on business recruitment and expansion and provides high-paying jobs for our citizens. Our goal is for Arden County to remain a premier place to live, work, and raise a family. Healthy business and industry growth also helps keep the tax rate low. Our tax rate is the 21st lowest in the state at 50 cent per 100 valuation. The average statewide tax rate out of 100 counties is 62.47 cents. Let me say that again. The average tax rate is 62.47 cents, and we're at 50 cents. With the tax rate 20% lower than the average, Arden County is extremely attractive to people looking to relocate to a thriving area with a high quality of life. Striving to continue to provide the quality of services our residents expect on a lower-than-average tax rate has become a double-edged sword in many respects. We are often criticized by our citizens for not having a lower tax rate, yet we are an extremely efficient organization and pride ourselves on being fiscally conservative. As the 14th-largest county in the state, it is increasingly more difficult to provide the services that are expected of a large county yet retain one of the lowest tax rates. While we have a lot to be thankful for, our challenges are great. Arden County funds three different educational entities: Arden State School Schools, Mooresville Grade School District, and Mitchell Community College. The total increase in educational funding is 5.4%, which is broken down into current expense, capital outlay, and debt service. Current expense or operational funding is derived from a formula that includes the average-per-pupil funding for other counties with an average daily membership within 20% of our ADM. The average is recalibrated every four years during the reappraisal year, and each year between the reappraisal cycle, we use the December Consumer Price Index, or CPI, not to exceed our Avalon growth. Each year, the current expense funding is adjusted as described above. In addition, we guarantee that the per-pupil funding will never decrease as part of the funding agreement. For the '25-'26 fiscal year, the per-pupil funding will go from $2,287 to $2,354 per student, which is a 2.9% increase that equals December CPI. The second funding method is capital outlay, which is derived from sales tax. The chart below depicts the capital outlay funding allocated in each entity that totals $16,774,670, which is an increase of $1,433,787. The third funding method is debt service. Arden County pays the debt service for new school facilities. Over the past 10 years, we have paid for these facilities through voter-approved bonds, yet the demand for school facilities is forcing us to explore other funding options. We must get creative on funding new school construction due to the increase of building materials and inflation since 2020. Weathers Creek High School, which was funded through a voter-approved general obligation bond in 2020, broke ground on April 4, 2025. What was anticipated to cost $80 million in 2020 now has a budget of $130 million without athletic fields. To bridge this gap, the county borrowed an additional $40 million in limited obligation bonds and took an additional $10 million from the Arden County Health Department Project to move forward the construction of the high school. This is to fully fund the site work and educational facility, yet does not include athletic facilities and further delays the Health Department Project for the county. In addition, we began to set aside $10 million each year for the anticipated Parker Town Elementary School that is currently under design. The goal is to pay cash for this facility. The original budget was $40 million for this elementary school, but now it's anticipated to be over $52 million for a 720-student capacity and a 900-capacity core. Additional funds for this project are being taken from the Capital Reserve account, which was intended for future county projects. So, we're seeing the benefit of being a pay-go county and saving for county projects. The final item is the Public Safety Training Center for Mitchell Community College that was approved, again, in the 2020 bond. The initial project estimate was $10.5 million, but the land they anticipated to use for this project was sold, delaying the project until the City of Statesville donated land for this much-needed facility. Phase one of this project includes a driving pad, burn tower, and classroom building with an estimated cost of just over $32 million. The Community College is adding additional funds to this project, and the county is taking $8.5 million out of the Capital Improvement Plan and reserve fund balance to move this project forward. Total debt service, above and beyond the cash taken from other county projects that are being delayed, totals $33,602,84, which is an increase of $1,679,252 for this fiscal year. The county has taken saved funds for much-needed capital projects and reallocated those funds to complete these three educational projects, which I've detailed above. Our hope is that these estimates reflect a worst-case, and the projects will be completed on time and under budget, allowing the excess funds to revert back to the county project from which they came from. The pace of residential growth, demand for schools, and shortage of available funding has required the county to press pause on construction of much-needed county facilities to address the capacity needs of the schools. However, paying cash for school facilities is not a practice that can be sustained. Therefore, we must search for other revenue sources in the future. The county has an eight-year capital improvement plan that helps us prepare for capital needs on the horizon. The following projects are included in the '25-'26 plan. The Government Center, which is this building, better known as the Historical Courthouse, has been a multi-year project. It began with restoration work on the roof, continued to the foundation windows and doors, and is in the final month of the new ADA entryway project. The final phase will include interior renovations as well as updated mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. This will finally finalize the courthouse restoration project. We also plan to continue the incremental funding for the ADA Accessibility Program and the LED lighting replacement program throughout our various county facilities. We need a warehouse facility to house our rolling stock of trailers, light towers, mobile command bus, mobile health unit, et cetera. Placing the various apparatus under one roof out of the weather will greatly decrease the maintenance cost and extend the useful life of these apparatus. It will also consolidate them in one secure area protected from theft and vandalism. We would recommend co-locating a department that is on the list for a replacement facility to better utilize the property and ensure the facility is manned. We are also setting aside funds to finish renovating the untouched space at Government Center South, which is in our Mooresville area. The space and need study will help us identify the highest priority for that space once the report is finalized. Our information technology needs include upgrading our storage area network, which is our SAN, and replacing the Mitel phone system with a more cost-effective option. The Elections Office needs a high-speed scanner and tabulator, and emergency communications must replace the emergency recording system, which we hope will be partially funded by 911 funds. The county partners with the City of Statesville with grant matches on capital projects at the airport, so there are funds allocated for the 5% match on those approved projects if the grants are received. We have three routine maintenance items, which include a roof replacement at the Health Department, replacement of four HVAC units at the Social Services Department, and a chiller replacement at the library. For our county parks, we allocated funds to add additional amenities, recreational amenities at the McCrery Creek Access, which is in partnership with Duke Energy, and a plan to add a permanent restroom at Big Leaf Slopes Park. With the opening of Jennings Park, we will need to initiate incremental funding each year that will be utilized to replace the turf on the fields when that need arises. By incrementally saving funds each year, this minimizes the higher one-time cost. We also budgeted for additional parking at Jennings Park due to the magnitude of cars that are parked along Deets Road when it's utilized for tournaments. Regarding personnel, last fiscal year, the budget focused on growth. We added 57 new positions, with majority of those in two departments, Social Services and EMS. Several of those new positions were funded mid-year and began in January. This year, we are focusing on staff retention and are not recommending any new positions or reclassifications of occupied positions as part of this budget process. And let me just say, that's unprecedented. Over the past several years, the Board of Commissioners have invested greatly in our staff. They understand it is cheaper to retain staff versus replacing them, and we have made great strides to ensure we are offering a competitive wage while retaining and recruiting the best and brightest. Last year, we implemented a market study that provided a formula for calculating the salary for new hires, promotions, and demotions. The formula considers a person's time and position and years of service to ensure we offer the most competitive wage and achieve internal equity among staff in the same position. We are in the final stages of implementing the first few phases of the market study and have one final phase to complete, which is anticipated to be in July. It will take about a year for all the new procedures to stabilize, which is another reason we're not recommending any new... Excuse me. My pages are wrong. Yes, thank you. Any new positions? I want to thank the Board for making investments in staff, those bold steps to help ensure we remain an employer of choice. We are more competitive in the market, and we are seeing an increase in the quality and, more importantly, the quantity and, more importantly, the quality of our applicant pool. We are moving in the right direction, yet cannot become complacent. We must take incremental steps to ensure we are paying a fair and competitive wage to our local and dedicated public servants. This budget includes a 3% pay scale adjustment, which will increase all staff pay by 3%, as well as adjusting our starting pay by the same percentage to assist us in filling those vacant positions. This increase will become effective with the beginning of the fiscal year in July. We are also working to revamp our performance review process. Our hope is, with a new performance review process, we can revisit in the coming years merit increases that allow us to reward high-performing employees. So, regarding our planning and preparation, in this current fiscal year, which is fiscal year '25 budget, we funded the completion of an internal space and need study for county departments and outside agencies for which we must provide space. Due to cost, we narrowed the scope of the consultant to focus on additional courtroom space. With the increasing backlog of cases, we do not have enough courtrooms to hold court, which is adding to our jail population. As we work through the most logistical and cost-feasible solution, we are working with our federal partners to explore a shared facility use agreement to be able to run court in the federal courthouse in downtown Statesville. We sincerely appreciate Congressman Pat Harrigan for helping us explore these possibilities. While it's not a permanent solution, it does provide temporary relief as we continue to work on a long-term solution. As a cost-savings measure, our Facility Services Department took the remaining portion of this project on and began work with our department directors to gather information on their fiscal space and anticipated growth. This study will determine existing space utilization and project when each facility will reach capacity. This study will help us plan for future expansion and allow us the ability to begin saving funds to incrementally address these future needs. With the addition of staff comes the need for additional space to house those staff members. Therefore, we are waiting for the results of the study to ensure we make informed decisions and have adequate space to accommodate any future new staff. The results of this study will be added to our eight-year capital improvement plan, it will be ranked by priority, and addressed as funding allows. We also contracted with a consulting firm to perform a comprehensive fire study. This study will provide recommendations on our fire districts, fire funding, perform a deep dive analysis on our fire apparatus and replacement schedule, as well as perform an assessment on our fire facilities, the condition, location, and any new anticipated facilities. With 18 contracted volunteer fire departments and two standalone rescue agencies, it has taken more time than anticipated to receive all the requested information back from those agencies. For this reason, the consultants are not able to finalize the report, and we are not able to incorporate any of the recommendations into this fiscal year budget. As a result, this fiscal year budget remains the same funding formula with a blanket 5% increase to each department's base funding, retaining the 9-cent tax rate. Our goal, once we receive the final report from the consultants, is to incorporate those recommendations in future budgets. So, let's talk about challenges. The county struggles to keep up with the fast pace of residential growth. In 2024, a total of 2,620 new... Let me flip my slide. A total of 2,620 new residential permits were issued countywide. Of those permits, 75% or 1,977 were issued by the municipalities, while only 25% were issued by the county. To put that into perspective, 90% of the county's square miles are in the county's planning and zoning jurisdiction, yet only 25% of the new residential growth is occurring in the county. For this reason, we must work with our municipalities to keep the lines of communication open as we struggle to accommodate the growth, most of which we do not regulate or control. We continue to see proposed and approved legislation with negative impacts on Arden County citizens and the county's ability to serve them. Our elected officials are chosen to represent the will of the people. To do that, they need to hear from the people, know and understand their concerns, and make decisions that are in keeping with their ideals. We continue to hear concerns from our constituents regarding road congestion and traffic, short-term rentals on Lake Norman that have turned into party houses, increasing cost of services, sprawling development, the list is endless. When we hear about these concerns, we work to address them to the best of our ability, but it takes a team approach. All local governments in Arden County must work together on these broad concerns, because very seldom are solutions in the power and control of just one jurisdiction. Unfortunately, we are slowly seeing an erosion of local decision-making authority. All 100 counties are not the same, and a one-size-fits-all approach does more harm than intended good. State legislation historically created minimum standards and allowed local jurisdictions' flexibility to decide what best fits their area, and if necessary, allowed them to be more restrictive than the state, but never less restrictive. That thought process is eroding, and it should be concerning to all citizens, regardless of where you reside. New legislation can dramatically increase the cost of compliance at the local level and erode our citizens' voices in what happens in their county, their community, and their neighborhood. We have become increasingly more vigilant reviewing proposed legislation to weigh the impact it will have locally to ensure we share our concerns over unfunded mandates and one-size-fits-all legislation that erodes our citizens' voices. Local elected leaders are your neighbors. They're the people in the line at the grocery store behind you and in the car sitting next to you at the stoplight. Over my career, I've witnessed elected leaders make decisions that negatively impact themselves, their families, and their businesses, because it was in the best interest of the greater good. That's a sign of a great leader. That's a leader that has a true servant's heart, that understands it's difficult to lead, and sometimes, the right decision is not always the easiest. These leaders understand the impact should be measured and always focus on the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens they were elected to serve. Being a good leader with honesty and integrity is already a daunting task, but some proposed legislation firmly plants a bullseye on the backs of those elected leaders, making them vulnerable to frivolous personal lawsuits. If this trend continues, it will be increasingly more difficult to find strong leaders willing to run for office, which will be detrimental to us all. We have yet to see the impact tariffs may or may not have on the cost of goods and materials. We are staring down the barrel of several legislative proposals that could dramatically increase our budgets and erode local control with the mere stroke of a pen. We continue to plan for the unprecedented growth we are experiencing as it migrates from the southern end of our county to the central and northern portions. We still struggle with the escalating cost of construction and the need to add capacity to our schools. All of these factors have shaped this fiscal year's budget, which narrows our focus on high-priority projects. We must look for a sustainable way to pay for new school construction. As we continue to grow residentially, we must have adequate educational space. Over the past few years, we have struggled to pay for the increasing cost of school facilities. We have robbed funds that were saved to pay for much-needed county facilities to bridge the funding gap on Weathers Creek High School, Parker Town Elementary, and Mitchell Community College's Public Safety Training Center. This is not a sustainable practice, and we need a long-term solution. One revenue source we have left untouched is an additional quarter-cent sales tax available to counties if voter-approved. This is an avenue to generate much-needed revenue to help pay for these new capital facilities without placing undue pressure on property owners. A quarter-cent sales tax would generate nearly $8.5 million per year that could help pay for school construction. Of the nine counties that surround us, only two, Davie and Yakon, do not charge an additional quarter-cent sales tax. If our citizens shop in any of the other surrounding counties, they are already paying 7% sales tax, and if they shop in Mecklenburg, they're paying 7.25% sales tax versus Arden County's current 6.75%. This tax is paid by renters and county visitors, as well as all those that diverse our county, and is considered a more favorable tax when compared to property tax. This message fulfills my obligation under North Carolina General Statute 159-11 to present the recommended fiscal year 2025-2026 general fund budget of $3,438,360. It retains the current tax rate at 50 cent per 100 valuation based on a tax base of $44,741,260,000, with a collection rate of 99.36%. The unassigned fund balance on June 30 of 2025 is estimated to be $112,162,012, which is 32.58% of the recommended fund balance. Respectfully submitted, Beth M. Milton, Arden County Manager.
Thank you. Following down our agenda, we did have a closed session, the item this afternoon in regards to economic development. In accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A4, it was for information only with no action taken. Following down our agenda, we are at the end of it. It brings us down to the end. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
The comments in meeting about the budget, that's next week, from...
Yes, we will start on the 12th. Let me look real quick.
Eight or nine?
Nine AM.
Nine to five.
At 9:00 AM would be nine to five. We'll start on Monday, the 12th. We'll go from nine to five on Monday. We'll go from nine to five on Tuesday, the 13th, and Wednesday, the 14th. If we need an additional day, it would be Friday, the 16th, but we're hoping to get it done.
it done those three days.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to remind you of that.
Before you leave, your budget books are right here. So, and it is the big, detailed book, so don't forget your budget book.
Where's it located, at Agriculture Center?
At Cooperative Extension, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for a well-composed, well-thought-out message.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Howell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Oh, God.
And I don't know what happened to my...